You remember previously, right?
I was.
Did you do a single plus one?
Nope.
What are we gonna do?
I did, I got on it today.
It was on my list.
That's right.
He'll give you this.
Yeah, she's got access control part. Back in 2021.
Steph, well, she was on.
Okay, yeah.
All right, good work.
Okay, thank you.
There she is. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. First call to speed through, welcome to the our April, first meeting in April of Longford City Council. And the first item on the agenda, after calling the order, is to approve the agenda. And is there a motion to that effect? So Scott, second? Second. Paul. Proven seconded to approve the agenda as presented. And all favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Steph, again, give a thumbs up or whatever, or okay, or whatever when it comes to approval and so on. Next item on the agenda is communications part. If you're here to speak to any item that's on the agenda, hopefully you'll look, grab the agenda from the back of the room and you can speak when an item comes up. Otherwise, if there's anybody here to speak to anything that's not on today's agenda, you've got five minutes at the podium here, and we're open for that right now. Hi, Scullford. Anybody allowed to speak at the open here? This has been a part of the meeting here, then we'll close that area, and then move on to the consent agenda. We have three items, council minutes and two liquor licenses. Questions to staff, or are we ready to move forward on the motion on that?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Proven seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Public hearing was, we already conducted that earlier. There's no ordinances for today. Resolutions for approval. First item is the Resolution 47-2025-A, approving budget amendment to fiscal year 2025-2026 city of supplement budgets. Staff, explanation? Can we move on to new process or anything?
Municipal budgets operate on fiscal year and may zero out essentially at the end of the year. Every time that we have mixed spend or projects that carry over, we have to amend a budget to show that those are expenditures and revenues. This is probably the first of two that we typically do in a year. As I noted in my report, it looks like we spent an awful lot of money, but this coincides with last fiscal years budget where it looked like we had millions of dollars sitting in the bank. And it's just a time limit capital projects.
Any questions of staff regarding this resolution? Budget amendment.
Unless there are further questions, I would move approval of Resolution 4-7-2025-A.
Amy Scott, is there a second?
Second.
And Paul. Proven seconded by Scott Paul. To approve Resolution 47-2025-A, budget amendment with 2025-2026 budget year, and I would say all votes, motion.
Terrell.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Thank you, that resolution passes. Moving on to 47-2025-B, fixing a date for meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement, issues some notes, evidence, the obligations for the city they're under. For a $500,000 amount.
So this borrowing, I'll just go over both resolutions, B and C, one is worth $500,000, the second is worth 2.25 million. The $500,000 is to run electric in the downtown to coincide with the Alliance Smart Street Lighting Pilot Program. We are running electric because we wanted the ability to have outlets as one of these pedestals to obviously help with our various festivals that we have. We're also running fiber so that we have Wi-Fi capability. And then the Smart Street Lights will be the vessel for that Wi-Fi capability that will go all the way down to Memorial Park. And then the 2.25 million is for the Rachel Street improvements that will basically open the door for QuickStar to start construction. Fall of '26, I believe. We are required to have our improvements done by June of 2026. It would be on their fall of 2026 construction bucket for opening in 2027, I believe is what they say.
Just a quick question on the, do we need both guides of Rachel completed?
Yeah, so the east side of Rachel is actually completed more like a residential street, so as far as traffic flow in and out, emergency vehicles making the turn on Highway One, other number of other aspects, that actually has to be widened and some turn lanes. I'll look at that intersection, and of course, on the west side, it will be a new street, so we shouldn't have any issues there. The reason they're separated is the 2.25 is being completed with accessing the financing and subject to a reverse arrangement.
Any sense of timing for Plaza on when they're going to shrink their footprint?
Well, they got their 90-day notice today from QuickStar, so they actually closed at like 2:00 this afternoon to discuss moving the fence.
You mean have to start within 90 days, or?
So they just require to get, QuickStar would require to give them a 90-day notice of when the project would potentially start, and by the time we borrow funds and put the project out for a bid, 90 days from today, they could actually get the other way.
So that's, that's step 1A, right? Or is, or part 1A?
Well, so for us, the Rachel Street improvements on both sides are essentially all that we have to complete. And then QuickStar will start, start on the side. Plaza will move their own fence and then move their entrance.
So this was, go ahead.
I would move approval of Resolution 4-7-2024-B, the $500,000 for the Uptown Lighting Project.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Paul and Scott. Seconded to move forward to Resolution 47-2025-B, setting a date for meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement for the $500,000 Streetscape lighting project. If there are no further questions of staff, if we're ready to vote on that, that's all votes.
Wes.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Moving on to 47-2025-C, fixing a date for meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement, issues some notes, evidence, obligations for the city they're under, $2,200,000 and the Rachel Street project that Chris just referenced. Any questions at this point? They've been pretty well explained. Motion to approve?
I would move to approve Resolution 4-7-2025-C for the amount of $2 million, that's hard from the other side, $2,250,000 bond for the Rachel Street improvements.
Thank you, Paul. And is there a second?
I'll second, and to, give it a second. To clarify, we're setting the public hearing date, we're not borrowing two and a quarter million tonight, so.
Correct. Thank you.
Paul and Stephanie on that. And with that clarification, and if we're ready to vote, Marcha.
Rose.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to 47-2025-D, adopting the Lynn County Multi- Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan for 2025 to 2030.
Doesn't ever feel like Lynn County stops working on various sections of this, but they do update the plan every five years. And I say that actually, I'm happy that it seems like they're constantly working on it, it is in front of cities and counties throughout the process. So we have a very active EMA, and of course with Rachel and COVID. Can't say anything but positive about Lynn County and then our representative representatives here as well, if you have any questions specifically, but the plan itself is required for any federal funding, FEMA, disaster mitigation grants of that nature, so.
So that leads me to question, if FEMA goes away, does this have to be rewritten?
Not necessarily. It depends on how they do it, I guess, if they just do away with FEMA and absorb it into another government agency. A lot of times the enabling legislation states the same. The nomenclature would probably need to change where it refers to FEMA, but the content might still need to be similar.
Thank you. Good question, Paul. Any other questions of staff? Play out this for next five days, five years? The motion?
I would move approval of Resolution 4-7-2025-D, accepting the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Scott, is there a second? Second. And Paul. Proven seconded to move forward 47-2025-D, and that is another vote, all votes, Marcha.
Rose.
Yes.
Wes.
Yes.
Terrell.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to mayoral proclamations. I made, I made an executive decision here on mayoral proclamations. Some of them are worthwhile and need to be read into the minutes and shared and be more of a role to think. I'm going to have a second tier here of Free City, B City, Arbor Day, those types of proclamations where they're just on this agenda, they're in the record, and we have proof that they're part of the record, but I'm not going to indulge you with reading at all. You can read it yourself.
You're gonna enrage the tree lobby. I don't know about this.
I can stand here. We can all move here.
If they really want to, it's the same, it's the same proclamation with different dates. Last five years.
1872 with Jay Sterling Morton probably hasn't changed last year.
Because I got requests for proclamations on medical equipment to hospitals to support certificates of need for hospital equipment. I mean, the gambling coalition, a few months ago, I'll see what happens. So we're gonna forego reading this, hopefully you don't want to get it. No, old business, moving on to motion to approval, claims lists, as Marcha sent out this afternoon. Questions about that?
Is there approval of the claims lists as presented?
Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Proven seconded to approve the last claims lists as presented. This is a voice vote, all favor the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Next item is the discussion consideration of temporary special event permanent application for the NDA group committee, council action is needed, and if that representation here, if you have any questions or you want to volunteer any further explanation here, and do.
Really, essentially what has happened is kind of a, I won't say the volunteer base, but the leadership of the NDA group stepped down after last year's events, so this year there, there'll be a couple spinoffs, I think. There is still going to be a presence downtown, I think Pollyann might be working on something in that parking lot next to the business, and then of course, the rest are looking to go to Elliott Park, so it would be on First Street, wouldn't affect traffic per se, it is a public space, so hence the special event for that. It's been through staff, had a couple small, minor comments about tractors in the parking lot, it's a bad issue, but other than that, no, no red flags have popped up.
Is this still CDG event?
It's not.
No, no longer.
Are, are you the chair?
No.
Just so they can hear you online.
Now raise your hand, you're the chair.
No, I'm not the chair.
But it's not a, a CDG?
No longer a CDG, so we're kind of trying to keep the event alive. Pollyann is doing it uptown, well, we're all kind of doing it together, but Pollyann's doing it up in the parking lot next to her store, and we've always had it in our parking lot, but we were just trying to make it a bigger event, so that's why we were looking into moving it into the park behind us.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval of the temporary special event for the NDA group.
Paul and Stephanie.
I'm, I'm still waiting for the van to show up, but that's just me.
If you got on the committee, you probably have some influence there. Paul and Stephanie moved to approve item two, the temporary special event for the application for the NDA group, and if you're ready to vote on that, all favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries. Number three, special consideration of appointing Officer Blanks to the temporary interim police, police chief position, commencing on July 1, 2025. And council action is needed. If I want, last Thursday's meeting?
I can explain real quick, the reason it says temporary interim, which seems counterproductive, but in order, because of the police bill of rights to skip a lot of processes on December, should, should Officer Blanks move into the position permanently at the end of December, it's easier to call him a temporary interim and put a very specific timeframe on it, so.
And to be clear, when we talk about skipping processes, it's because we have the person we want. It's not to destroy some things.
When I say skipping the process, you would actually have to hold a hearing to terminate the temporary interim police chief and then reappoint it. It just seems convoluted to go through all of that when it could just be somewhat seamless, so we're not necessarily skipping processes on the hiring side of things as much as we were just trying to make Jason's life just a little bit easier to transition in December. Mine as well. But, no, I, you know, Chief Shannon will be in town beyond that, some of the reasons he needs to take a vacation before he steps out of the office altogether, so.
Yeah, right.
We changed that to July 1 instead of July 31, which is I think is technically his last day. We're not speaking, so. So, yeah, so we've, Jason and I have talked about wages and where that will fall. Essentially about just over $91,000 would be starting wage on the interim, and then we'd receive a jump to just over $98,000 if he was made permanent police chief, and then return around to get the cost of living rent that would be available in July, so at, by the time a whole year would go by, he would be not necessarily quite where Doug is at, but within grasp, I guess you'd say, so.
And I will say there was a very healthy discussion at the Public Safety Committee meeting several months ago, I can't remember exactly, but both myself, the Lisbon representative, the community representative, both heads of the city staff for Longford, I suppose, applaud and welcome you as a chief, so it's going to be that process as well.
At Scott's comments, when Chief Shannon turned his resignation to our council several months ago, I mentioned that, thankfully, my intent to not do a national, not do a regional search for a variety of reasons, and one of the reasons was because I had a very active, engaged, and well-centered, I would say, policy group, I'm pleased, so I, as far as saying I did, just listened to their comments, and that brings us to where we are today, and that's why this is an agenda item, which now is officially approved. Have you gone through the Lisbon council yet? I guess it starts with us, it starts with us, yeah. So we're looking for a motion to approve at this point.
I'm pleased to move to approve the appointment as temporary interim police chief, Jason Blanks.
I'll second.
Paul and Scott, proven seconded to approve Officer Blanks in his new temporary interim police chief position, and this is a voice vote, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, congratulations again, and we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
And fourth, the discussion consideration of approving the engagement letter with Abe Riscuni on the proposed $2,750,000 bond set, council action as needed.
I always say it costs $17,000, $17,200 to come up with all that fancy language that you get to read off on the resolution. We've, we've used allers historically for the nine years I've been here, I'm very happy with the work that they conduct, and I'm excited to work with them again on the project.
And this 2.75 million is the two and a quarter and the five that we just talked about. With that, I would approve of the engagement letter with Abe Riscuni for the 2.75 million, the estimated fee of 72.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second? Second. And Paul. Proven seconded to move forward with the engagement letter with Abe Riscuni for the 2.75. Do you have all the discussion, if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of the application number seven on the four renovations. I hear a few things about that project.
This pay-up case is in the amount of $313,500. Yeah, if you have an opportunity to walk down there, I'll take a look. The slide is on, onsite, the thousand piece play hook is onsite.
Did you say thousand? 11,000 pieces. 11,000 pieces.
They're, they're bringing in somebody, a carpenter specifically, but I think they have.
Why don't you just get a bunch of middle schoolers?
When we, when we met Jeff, who's the superintendent down there, it reminds me of going to IKEA and opening a box and seeing like all the parts and pieces, only they're in those black and yellow totes, and we're like, hell, no. And somebody had to open the tote, she was curious.
And I cracked the tote.
So did you expect?
I hadn't known how many pieces were in there.
The slide is in the parking lot, the big slide is in the parking lot, all the pieces are there, but I'm ecstatic that we decided to remove all of the existing deck and re-core new, because it has already changed the look. They want to get the buildings done. Instead, it's not necessarily going to look like a brand new aquatic center, but it does look much, much better. So, yeah, excited about where we're at.
Thought it'd be safe to walk through there Saturday morning, cold Saturday, seven guys working there. They're pouring concrete, there, there are four different places they're working, and so I didn't strip around very much there, but literally seven workers.
We have deadlines, huh?
Yeah, they're on the table.
And did I hear the 9% mark of punch list at April 23? Before you feel cool, so that's a good, you're making your deadlines here, so keep it, keep it going. Keep that process going, we should probably pay application number seven.
Yeah, let's not take them long. With that, I would approve of the application number seven for the four renovations in the amount of $313,000 and $313,500.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second?
I'll second.
Scott and Stephanie. Proven seconded to move forward with the application number seven to Libra. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Special consideration of European Architects invoice number WC Chao Care Study, council action is needed. This is number four, something like that?
Yeah, and there'll be one more after this, but this invoice is in the amount of $4,332.40. The project for the most part is completely have a general layout and kind of rough process in that, so we'll see how some meetings go on the fundraising raising side, and then of course, there'll be significantly more work to be done if it decides to move forward.
So motion to approve that European Architects invoice.
I'd move approval of invoice 24426000-44 camera.
Thank you, Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul and Scott, proven seconded to move forward on the European Architects invoice number three in this process. If you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. They have a JEO consulting group in the Uptown Streetscape plan, their next invoice?
So their first invoice is in the amount of $3,068.80, and then there's, you know, put on me separately, but the next invoice they thought they sent back in January and did not, and that's in the amount of $20,501.
That's the first one, $3,068. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Paul and Scott. Or Scott and then Paul, whatever. Proven seconded to move forward with the first JEO invoice for the Streetscape project, and timing is still, what Heritage Day is pretty close, or don't?
Well, that's, that's where the, why?
Oh, wait, wait.
This is the Uptown Streetscape.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But they sound similar. They sound similar, we need to stop talking about Uptown.
Stop saying words.
We got a motion to approve this Uptown Streetscape project invoice, ready to vote on that one, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Already heard explanation on the second JEO invoice, any other questions about it?
I'd move approval of JEO invoice number 15818.
And Paul, is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul and Scott, ready to vote on the second JEO invoice? All in favor of taking that one, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion consideration of DMT invoice and District Preservation Design Guidelines.
This pay-up is in the amount of $4,193.23, so JMT held their kickoff meeting with District Preservation, that's first step in getting those design guidelines updated.
Anybody from District Preservation here to speak to that? Probably not.
I've been engaged with the process, pleased with the work of the commission in pursuing an appropriate vendor to perform this, and also very happy with their decision to move forward with JMT. I think it is the appropriate time for this type of review. It only makes the processes better. You know, goals for this for everyone to really understand is that we have updated guidelines as things from when these were first written have certainly changed in terms of material. terms of materials and those types of activities. And we've also seen in recent years that it's, the guidelines as written currently are somewhat difficult for residents to understand and follow. So the commission is doing the right thing and JNT will deliver a quality product, in my opinion.
Agreed. It is a shame that that solder won't be here on this.
Yes.
See them updated, but it is, it is time that it happened.
Paul Stephen, thanks for representing our council on Street, Paul.
Just a motion to.
I would move approval of JNT invoice 1-256362 in the amount of $4,193.23.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul Stephanie, move to second to move forward with the JNT invoice of historic preservation design guidelines. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have discussion consideration of the fire department training apparatus construction on Bryant Road public worksite.
So part of your packet was presentation that the fire department has put together. This is something that I talked to the fire department about. When we first purchased the nine acres on Bryant Road, I know it's something that they've discussed for a very long time. I think Kirkwood is the only local training facility in the area. And so, and all departments tend to use it. But essentially, we would put this out at Bryant Road. It would be, I guess, northeast of where the compost piles currently sit. I haven't seen it. It looks a little bit like this. There'll be basically three different training facilities on one concrete pad. And will allow them to do many different scenarios as far as filling the smoke and doing other things. The other aspect to this is we can open it up to other fire departments in the vicinity. Probably small, probably charge a small fee for use or some sort of other benefit. But excited for the prospect, excited to get the area where this will be going cleaned up. So as part of this, they're going to take the concrete and asphalt and other waste that we have and grind that up and actually use that as a base for the pad. Overall, I think the total cost is about $140,000, of which we've secured $130,000 right now. And we'll likely secure the other $10,000 over the course of the next two years, so.
Not that I want to spend more money, but that seems wildly low.
Well, I would say it was probably wildly higher if we had bid out this project to a contractor. But the nice thing about a volunteer fire department is they have a lot of contacts and a lot of people that know construction. So the $140,000 is, those guys volunteering more hours to make this happen, so.
But then, I mean, just to clarify, that's the hole, that's the pad, that's the three buildings, that's the whole.
Yeah, I would, if you were probably to build this by itself, it would probably be more than what happened.
Yeah, I mean, that's, when we look at these, that's what you kind of expressed.
But I think, and I don't want to steal their thunder, but I think the benefits of doing this, everybody on the department recognizes that and knows with experience doing this, they're more than happy to set forth and cut down the overall cost. But this will be the first of its kind in Lynn County for sure. Lynn County, nor Florida, to be tried the closest one, they have something very similar to this. Riverside Fire Department has similar.
Yeah.
I can see the money.
How about, could you light? Could you? If I don't.
Yeah, so yeah, this would be something that's not, not the first of this kind, but probably one throughout the Midwest. Cost wise, like you said, we were very fortunate. The first kind of lump sum of this came from the state donation to the Volunteer Fire Association. So it was kind of a dream to begin with, and then we've had some more matching funds. The rural fire district has earmarked $50,000 for the project from their reserves that they've taken and county tax carry money, which will really put us right where we need to be in shameless plug, selling pancakes. So every nineteen. Keep selling pancakes to make this thing, make this thing go. But you know, it was something we, we came up with, kind of brainstormed a little bit about that, that money we received from the estate and what we could do with it that would really last a long time. And this is something that'll, it'll set us up for a long foreseeable future, probably our tenure and probably the next group to come. So granted, too, that the location of it is absolutely ideal. I don't think we can get a better, better spot for that to kind of tuck it away from, tuck it away from the city, but also be fairly close to the city. I will say that the features of it, and I'll let Jacob, he can come up and talk a little bit more about the ins and outs of it, but the features of it, it's very malleable to what we can do inside of it. Kirkwood is a very, very stale environment, or sterile environment, I should call it that. So it's, this is something that we can reform walls and make it more realistic, about as realistic as we can get without burning, having a house for, for training burn. So it's a great opportunity. I'm excited to be here, I mean, to be at this point. And like you said, when we had the funding wrapped up, when we started getting bids for everything, that really, really sealed the deal. So I'd like Jacob to talk a little bit about the overall design and that.
Oh, it's still a fun job. Well, thank you, we're back. But yes, this design kind of came together because it's actually modeled off of like houses in our, in our city. One of them is going to be very similar to all these uptown, kind of where you walk in, there's a staircase up to the second floor, the living room. We can actually design it that way. And that'll be the, the burn side. So we'll be able to set fires in there, burn some wood chips possibly, and then we'll be.
A lot.
A lot of wood chips. But we'll be able to use that and for really pretty minimal cost, even for maintenance throughout the time. And then there'll be a separate clean side. And one thing with firefighting right now is prevalence is cancer. And with our volunteers, we're going to maintain a good, healthy volunteer membership. So we'll have a burn side with, where we can practice actual fire, then a clean side where we can go in and keep everybody clean, away from the carcinogens and stuff like that. The pad itself is going to be big enough, we can practice water supply for urban or rural tactics that definitely help the rural trustees budget in. And then that center building, that training logistics center, there's just a ton of props and things like that that go into this. And so that'll kind of house all that nice and, nice and dry. So yeah, it's been, it's been awesome working all in the city and of course, making their merit. Ready?
Any questions?
I would just say that having, as a child, having a barn burned down and watching the volunteers in my town back in Ohio at work, a lot of people don't realize what all goes into it, what, what we've learned over, I'm not even going to say how many years since then. But I, I think this is a great use of property. I think it's a great opportunity for the community and certainly will help to continue the great relationship we have with other departments in the area that should be a great addition. So thank you. Thank you, yes, appreciate it.
Well said, Paul, and I agree.
So is that a motion, Stephanie?
Well, take that as a motion, Stephanie.
Okay.
Stephanie and Paul, to move forward with the fire department training apparatus construction at Bryant Works public site. Thank you for helping, helping to make your room for them out there, sharing your space. Ready? Motion to second before, ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Can't impress with the services that Mount Vernon provides, whether it's, you know, ambulance services, or police department, or fire department, and so on. How lucky we are to have the services that we have, the people involved with that, the leadership on all the way through the staff there. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Street closer, street closure for Chalk the Walk. Discussion and council action.
Chalk the Walk's scheduled for May 3rd and 4th. The street closure likely starts on Friday, late afternoon, Friday, May 2nd. But yeah, this is obviously our big enough for the year.
I would approve of the motion to close the street for Chalk the Walk for 2025.
Thank you, Scott, is there a second? Second. Move to second to approve the additional street closure request. Before we put this to a vote, I will mention that, fire department guys just left, but we are a target for having a Lynn County new emergency trailer being available somewhere downtown, if you can find a room for it. It may be down by the water tower, but for them to display this new capability that emergency management has, Uptown Emergency Management has. But I made it to the Chalk the Walk, but it's a, it's a new to the county, it's the first opportunity to showcase it, so I raised my hand. And that could be bad if we're doing that for now on, so. But ready to vote on the street closure now? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Setting public hearing date for the adoption of the fiscal 2526 fiscal year budget.
This is the second public hearing that is required by state law for the property tax. And budget presentation will be available when that package comes out as well.
So this would be for the regularly scheduled second meeting.
Correct.
With that, I would move approval of setting the public hearing date for the fiscal year 2526 budget for our regularly scheduled April 21st meeting.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Here, Stephanie. Scott Stephanie, move to second to set the hearing date for the fiscal year 2526 fiscal year budget. And if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carries. Question consideration of Mount Vernon Cemetery Mowing Contract for 25 calendar year. Since a change from years of past vendor.
Yeah, obviously that vendor submitted the resignation just, just under a month ago. We had three people, three companies bid the project with Jordan's Property Care being the lowest responsible bid. This is just for the 25, 2025 calendar year. This project will go out to bid again October, November for next calendar year, but that will likely be for a three to five year period, just to see how it looks. But Jordan's Property Care actually takes care of the Lutheran Cemetery and Lori did some, some calling to Lutheran, and they're very happy with the level of maintenance that they receive. And so we're recommending that we move forward with Jordan's property care.
Who monitors their performance? Is that how it works? Or okay, I don't know, cemetery commission kind of bought or something like that?
Well, I will tell you, as active as the cemetery commission is, they definitely monitor what is going on. But I think this, this will give them an opportunity to, to see another organization out there. Public Works is out there quite a bit. If you haven't been out to the cemetery lately, I think it's the best it's looked in a very long time. Just removing the fence alone, just changes the dynamic and really started to bring out that corner, corner piece. So I expect, you know, to have this conversation again this fall, we'll have a better handle on, on what that looks like. But yeah, I would say the cemetery commission members are definitely out there weekly. Some of them are out there daily, depending on the weather.
Each group there, that's for sure. I think we need a motion, there's a second on this yet.
I would move approval of the contract for cemetery mowing with Jordan's property care in the amount of $34,500.
Please, there's a second.
I'll second.
Paul Scott, motion to move forward to approve Jordan's for the Mount Vernon Cemetery Mowing Contract for 2025 year. And if you're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Question, discussion consideration of gas service installation at the public worksite.
Yeah, for some reason, I think they need heat out there. Alliant is going to run the natural gas for $12,781.73. Actually, all in all, not too bad. They will be officed out of the north shop building. Moving forward, the installation is complete.
Just, just for the, there's a new office space.
So it's coming along really well.
The line runs down Bryant Road, where does that end?
Yeah, they got a tie-in up by Bryant Court.
Okay.
And they'll run down the right of way. And then we wound up actually running, originally our metering site for the gas was going to be on the west side of that north building. And we, we had our, our HVAC guys run the line across the building to the east side internally. That's saving us about $3,000 as far as getting the service, service up to the building to, they don't have to go past the south, the south building. But yeah, so.
Should have asked the fire station, fire guys, but are there fire, are those, do they have burners in these?
Jason can probably tell you.
Some do, I don't know what, I don't know what Jacob has.
Do we need to run gas to those buildings? I guess they'd have figured it out by then.
No. No.
Chris doesn't run a gas.
No. No, I, so they, they are training, they were, they have different apparatus, so they are, there's smoke, smoke chains that they can use. As Jacob alluded to, they could, they can actually burn ships in a wood barrel to create that smoke as well. So there's, there's various things that they can do, but yeah, running the natural gas line too is probably not.
With that, I would move approval of the gas service installation quote from Alliant for $12,781.73.
Paul, move second to make the gas station installation, gas service installation at public worksite with Alliant. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion consideration of the City Mountain Wellness Program for fiscal year 2026, which.
So this is a program that we've probably been discussing for the last five years. And staff invited Kristen Cook from Mercy Care Business Health Solutions to come out and discuss what the cost would be associated to starting a wellness program. It wasn't quite as expensive as I had originally envisioned. As a matter of fact, the Mercy Care, if you look, was under $5,000. Well, we're asking not to exceed $6,000 because we want to, in discussion with staff, talk about personal training so that we can, one of the issues people have with not actually joining and working out is the lack of knowledge on how to, and then some of the new habits that come in, back in their conversation with training. I had originally told staff, when we first started this discussion, in order for me to bring something forward to the council, I thought there needed to be kind of a cause and effect. So if we put together a wellness program, then it should at some point reduce our cost to health insurance premiums and of that nature. But when we joined IDHCP. insurance premiums, things of that nature, but when we joined, uh, IG HCP, um, really, it's almost, I mean, we had a zero percent increase, or a point two, two, five percent increase, so the chances of us getting any better deals under Walmart are pretty slim, but staff pointed out to me that there are members that are currently utilizing prescriptions for various, various things, and that, um, any reduction in that would help, uh, reduce our partial self funding, so there is, I think, going to be a cause and effect here, um, this is a program that, you know, you don't just get to throw your name in and say that I'm doing it, and then there's, there's no benchmark, so not only would Mercy, uh, Mercy Care run this program for us, they would design, um, kind of the monthly requirements in order to basically follow benchmarks, so that we, we know, uh, what we're getting out of it, and then LBC staff on top of that will be able to track visits, uh, through their computer programs, so for six thousand dollars across all of the budgets, um, no one budget's probably going to see more than five or six hundred dollars worth of expenses. Now, the second part to that, um, it is definitely something new, um, in order to participate, or how to encourage full-time employees to participate in this program, um, we are recommending that they receive, uh, a one-year membership to the LBC paid monthly, so the nice part about the LBC is when you sign up, uh, you can take a monthly payment plan, um, so if an employee leaves or drops out of the program, they receive the benefit up until the point that they actually got it, um, that they're not going to receive anymore, so we're not cutting a check to employees for the dollar amount of a membership, basically, uh, the LBC would invoice City Hall, and City Hall will pull it from the various department, so it's not a, it's not a monetary benefit that would go to the employee, they have to be part of the program, they're going to get this paid, but it doesn't come directly to them, it would just be kind of a pass-through for the city, um, if they wanted to upgrade their single membership, they would be responsible then for the cost, if they had a single plus one or a family or something of that nature, but, um, smoking cessation, tobacco cessation, uh, eating healthy, uh, and then of course, the various workouts and that nature, um, all will be monitored, uh, by Mercy, Mercy Care, and I'm actually excited about the, the prospect, I know it's another benefit, uh, from overall watching stock markets decline daily, but, um, it's one that I think I can get behind for a very minimal amount.
Question. Does it have any net impact on WZ, any net impact fiscal year for the LBC?
Uh, well, it's to be determined, obviously, right, we don't know how many people are going to participate in this, but, um, I think it'd be a wash, actually, I think if we can get more individuals involved, and that, the part that Chris was adding to in regards to personal training aspect of things, we get people, as long as we can get people to the building, and they feel comfortable with the machines, and comfortable with everything that we have in the building, they will work out, some people will come and they'll just do one or two things, because they don't feel comfortable with some of the other things that we offer, and that's what the personal training function is, is to add in that extra incentive or extra, uh, help and support to get them to stay and do some more additional or advanced workouts, which are going to be beneficial for the client, so to answer your question, I don't, I don't know in regards to whether it's going to be, you know, financially beneficial for us, but we don't have a ton of city employee memberships right now, so it's not like it's, I think, I think it's honestly, I think this is going to be a wash.
Um, and I don't want to throw crazy numbers out there, but when we were at IG HCP, um, yeah, Ozempic, I'm sure you've heard about a number of, I think, medicines for, for diabetes that they've now started to transition into weight loss drug, um, the cost of, of those, particularly, something like quarter thousand dollars a month.
A month.
And, um, for somebody, I'm going to use my, my cell, exactly, for somebody that's always kind of hovered right at the, the pre-diabetic side for, for weight and height, um, you know, not, not jumping over, that could potentially save almost fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, just on insurance, from prescriptions, so, um, I think, like I said, if we can get, it's something that we'll monitor, if only one employee obviously takes advantage of it, which I, I highly doubt, um, but it's probably not worth it moving forward in the future, but if, if of our thirty full-time employees, you know, we get seventy-five, eighty percent of the employees to sign up for this, then I think that we worth this file, and of course, we'll have more people there working out.
And when you talk about the impact on the budgets, it's, that it would be, if somebody, if a full-time police officer, it would come out of the police budget?
Correct.
That, okay, the monthly charge.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, with that, I would move approval of the Wellness Program, uh, through Mercy Care Business as presented.
Scott, is there a second? Second?
A second.
If it was definitely, if that's okay, Scott and Stephanie, move second to move forward the Mount Vernon Wellness Program for fiscal year twenty six, ready to vote on that, all favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, honest, a discussion, I am with budget discussion. This is about a lot already, but what else would you like to add?
I don't know, if you figure out what's going on in Moonee, I don't know, um, the latest call of legislative action came out, it was this afternoon, uh, of course, the House and Senate introduced a companion bill, about three weeks ago, four weeks ago now, um, so you know that more property tax reform is coming, they launched it, now they're kind of, I don't want to say they're second guessing aspects of it, but, um, they're shifting, in my opinion, they're shifting more of the property tax, bringing it back on to residential, so as a residential user, you're paying taxes on forty percent of the, forty-seven percent of the value of the home, in five years, that goes to a hundred, again, it is supposed to make the overall levy rate go the other direction, but, um, even with the levy rates at thirteen fifty and you're paying forty-seven percent, like I said, I haven't been able to run side-by-side numbers yet, but I don't necessarily see this as a windfall win, um, for individual homeowners, they still, in my opinion, have not fixed the biggest issue, and that is your reassessment every two years in odd, odd years, um, you know, uh, when you do the math, and your, your property valuation goes up by twenty-two, twenty-three percent, um, that's more of a significant issue than trying to fix a rollback, but we'll see. Right now, a general funds, uh, increases would be capped at two percent, um, and I've, I've said this at other public meetings, all this is going to do because new growth is exempted, how does that two percent cap, is push communities to want to continue to grow, so it's a bit of a phenomenon for Mount Vernon to like growth, but control, um, and moving forward, whether or not that sticks or not, would be a question. The other thing that they haven't answered is, um, the current TIP reimbursement rate, uh, our overall levy, uh, for the community is just over thirty-four dollars per thousand, the TIP levy rate is something like, um, let's say right around thirty-one, so if the individual tax rate goes from, you know, thirty-four down to twenty-something, and the TIP rate goes down that far, businesses that are expecting a, a reimbursement, uh, TIP money are going to see smaller dollar, because the levy rate is now much, much smaller, um, and most of those TIPS are on commercial and industrial businesses that are already paying ninety percent, so getting that ten percent back for them isn't going to close that gap at all, so, um, it will shift the burden, even as I'm looking at the bond issue ones for Quick Star, which is a, a TIP project, if there's less, less TIP money coming in from Quick Star to cover that TIP, then it's just going to move to, um, our levy rate, so that service is not a capped, uh, levy at the state, so as long as we stay within our five percent, this is just about twenty million dollars, um, we can, we can add whatever levy we need to in order to cover that, that debt, so, I don't know, we'll see. Yeah, other than that, it was a beautiful sunny day.
I'm pretty surprised on that, and we'll leave that as a placeholder, I don't have the agenda for a while yet, and the legislative session can't come soon enough. Um, reports, Mayor's report, I just mentioned two things, first of all, thanks to Allen's efforts, we received a Tree City USA Award, where Lee and I and, and Allen, who conveniently was already in the Moonee area at a conference, we were able to attend a luncheon, get recognized by the Trees, Tree City USA, Department of Natural Resources Chair was there, recognizing Mount Vernon for the trees he put in last year, and, um, pretty big deal, um, in the program, um, educational session in the morning that Lee and I caught, and then we had the recognition luncheon, and, uh, it's pretty cool to be recognized there for Mount Vernon, and, um, that's all the work that, that Allen and the staff have done to get us there, so another good, cool recognition, and, uh, I think there may be some kind of a, a visible recognition coming too at some point, that we're a few years, USA, more here, and the second thing I was going to mention, uh, Chris kind of alluded to it, is, uh, right at the point of, uh, childcare programs, um, to decide, um, where we're at on fundraising, and, uh, ramp up those efforts to foundations, and then businesses, and then to individuals, and, um, that is squarely in my ballpark here, and, uh, we're working on that, supplement the, uh, contribution of TIP funds that the city has provided here, and to see where this direction is going to go, um, our legislators have verbalized that three months ago, that they were supportive of the concept, but I don't see any, um, funds necessarily directed towards Mount Vernon for this area, but I think we've got a, a unique program, partnering with Cornell and the school district, and utilizing a third-party contractor to provide this immediate direct services, but, um, still a, a big chunk of that lump by one month, so, we're going to be working on that, any other council reports, committee reports, city administrative reports?
I don't have anything to add, other than Lori quickly pointed out that it's not just department heads that have harassment here tomorrow's calls back.
Okay, great. Meeting at Cornell with school, and Cornell's staff, it's happening, and thanks for keeping up with your continuing education, staff, uh, I think that concludes our agenda, is there anything else that needs to come before this council at this time, otherwise we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Thank you for getting on.
Sure.